Buenas tardes a todos, bienvenidos a los Cumbres de la Cámara. Hoy estamos en el Congreso de la Cámara, ahora son las 10:20. Tenemos dos miembros presentes hoy esta gracia del San. Por su voluntad, estamos 10 minutos para un pueblo llamándose la lista. Si están en el piso, por favor, vengan a la. ......... Buenas tardes a todos, ya son las 10:20. Tenemos nueve miembros presentes en este Congreso de la Cámara. Está llamándose la lista. Estamos en la Cámara. Buenas tardes a todos, bienvenidos a los Cumbres de la Cámara. Para la Junta de la Cámara de Los Angeles, para el Congreso de la Cámara de 2002. El Congreso de la Cámara se reúne todos los jueces, viernes y viernes a las 10:00. Y siempre invitamos al público a participar. Podemos participar aquí también ustedes pueden vernos en vivo por la estación de Televisión local 35. También en la página de la Cámara o por el teléfono de la Cámara. Saludaré, por favor, llame a la lista.
............... Muchas gracias antes de empezar con los asuntos de la agenda de hoy. Quiero pedirle a todos que se levanten y llamemos a los miembros del Congreso de la Cámara. Para llevarnos un saludo a la bandera. Miembros del Congreso y el público en los Cumbres de la Cámara, en los Cumbres de todas las formas. Le pediré que pongan su mano sobre su corazón y repita después de mí. Le pido la lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República por la cual se encuentra. Una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Gracias, Sr. Labon. Si puedo pedirle que permanezca sentado y bienvenido el rabino Emily Fagenson. A los Cumbres de la Cámara para llevarnos un momento de inspiración.
Quisiera compartir con ustedes una historia que tiene 1900 años. La configuración es una configuración similar a esta. Una asamblea de hombres en este caso, rabbinos de Palestina. Que como este estrecho cuerpo tenía la responsabilidad de supervisar la seguridad del pueblo. En este día en particular, el debate fue bastante caliente. El rabino Eliázer y el cuerpo estaban discutiendo la seguridad del horno. De una máquina particular de horno. Para el pasajero, podría parecer trivial, una cuestión triviasa para discutir. Y sin embargo, los rabbinos sabían, como ustedes miembros del Congreso. Si decidieran que el horno era inestable. Las familias tendrían que desasemejar y crear nuevos hornos. Esto tendría un impacto financiero en tanta gente. Y si el horno era realmente inestable, podría ser peligroso. Tuvieron que tomar decisiones prudentes para el bienestar del pueblo. En este día en particular, el rabino Eliázer apareció en la asamblea. Y dijo que el horno estaba bien. No se debió tomar ninguna acción. Los rabbinos discutieron y no estuvieron de acuerdo. El debate se hizo más y más caliente. Quizás ustedes conozcan situaciones similares. Fue frustrante, el rabino Eliázer dijo, si estoy bien y la ley está conmigo. Deja que ese árbol de hierba muestre. Todo lo miró. Y en ese momento, un árbol de hierba fuera del edificio fue arrojado y lanzado a 100 metros. Se levantó, se volcó 100 metros. Él pensó, claro. Pero otro rabino dijo, esto no me convence. Este no es un argumento razonable. Vamos a tomar otro voto y otra vez, el rabino Eliázer estaba opuesto por toda persona. En gran frustración, dijo, si estoy bien y la ley está conmigo. Deja que esa corriente muestre. Y la corriente, un broque que estaba corriendo fuera del edificio. La agua comenzó a ir subiendo. Él estaba seguro. Pero los rabbinos se rieron y dijeron. Estamos de acuerdo. El rabino Eliázer gritó en la parte superior de sus pulmones. Deja que las paredes de este cuarto muestren. Las paredes comenzaron a tremerse. Y otro rabino, el rabino Joseph, se dijo que había levantado su voz y dijo. Con respeto por la ley y el respeto por aquellos que lo impugnaron. Estas paredes no deberían interferir. Puedo imaginar a cada uno de ustedes atacando las paredes de este edificio con un terremoto. Pero eso es lo que hizo el rabino Joseph. Y las paredes se encerraron. Se han desgastado hasta hoy, con respeto por el rabino Joseph, pero con deferencia claramente por el rabino Eliázer. El argumento continuó largo hasta la tarde. Y finalmente, el rabino Eliázer dijo, si estoy bien y la ley está conmigo. Deja que los cielos muestren. Y el sueño de todo político ocurrió en ese momento. Una voz pequeña llego del cielo y dijo. ¿Por qué continúan estando de acuerdo cuando está claro? Que los cielos en sí están con el rabino Eliázer. En ese momento, el rabino Judá, un hombre pensador, apareció y mirando hacia arriba dijo. Lova Shamaimhi, no está en el cielo. Las reglas, en este caso escritas en la Biblia. Las reglas se les han dado a la tierra. No están más en el cielo. Y usted, el santo, que tenía una mano en estas reglas. Usted no puede interferir de esta manera. Y las reglas en la Duteronomía, que era un libro de reglas que los rabbinos estaban usando. Claramente dice que en argumentos de desacuerdo, uno toma el voto y sigue la mayoría. Lova Shamaimhi, no está más en el cielo. Es una historia y tiene 1900 años. No importa cuánto cada uno de nosotros podría querer interferir. Para resolver la disputa, para mostrarnos el camino. Lova Shamaimhi, no está en el cielo. En realidad, está en este cuarto, las decisiones se hacen. Así fue entonces, así es ahora. La tarea del gobierno es frente a cada uno de ustedes. Las reglas están hechas y aunque el más pasionado no pueda superar el proceso. No escuchamos voces del cielo. Y así es, ustedes son los líderes electos que deben seguir adelante. Sin milagros para llevarlos. El ritmo del debate puede ser lento. La tensión, el proceso puede irritar. La calidad del gobierno que todos en este cuarto sabemos. Bueno, eso es lo mejor, porque aún no hay voces del cielo. Entonces, no debe ser Dios quien habla por eso. Que las voces están muy débiles. Por eso, debe ser cada uno de nosotros para tener nuevas ideas. Cada uno de nosotros para dirigir nuevas soluciones a viejos problemas. Así debe ser cada uno de ustedes miembros del Congreso. Para buscar nuevas soluciones y nuevos compromisos y nuevos entendimientos. Esta historia es amada por los judíos y es frecuentemente contada, pero rara vez es esta historia corta. ¿Qué piensan que fue la reacción de Dios? Cuando Dios le dijo a los rabbinos, salgan de aquí, quédense fuera de esta conversación. Lova Shamaimhi, no está en el cielo, está aquí. ¿Cuál sería la reacción del santo? Se dice en ese Talmud, esa fuente preciosa de conocimiento judío. Que el rabino Nathan tenía poderes místicos y en realidad podía visitar al profeta Elijah. En una tal visita mística, el rabino Nathan preguntó a Elijah. ¿Qué hizo el santo en ese momento? Cuando el rabino gritó, Lova Shamaimhi, no está en el cielo. Elijah sonrió y dijo. El santo se rió hasta que hubo lágrimas y dijo. Mis hijos me han derrotado. En ese día, ellos pueden levantarse por cada uno de ustedes. Un momento que pruebe su paciencia. Una situación que cambie su generosidad del espíritu. Hay desafíos y ejemplos, cada uno de estos son parte de las myriadas dificultades que existen. Precisamente porque el gobierno es un proceso humano. Y no hay interferencias rápidas y milagrosas. Que el debate de este cuerpo sea honorable. Tan honorable. Que el debate de este cuerpo sea honorable, tan honorable que hace orgullo al fuente de justicia. Que su trabajo hoy sea tan fructífero que deleite al creador de la buena. Y que su conducta muestre tal generosidad de espíritu que el supremo amador de la misericordia se sonríe.
Gracias. Muchas gracias. Madre de la Cámara, por favor, por favor.
Aprobación de los minutos. Comendatorios de resoluciones para aprobar. Antes de comenzar el programa, señor presidente, hay una solicitud para continuar varios temas. Tema número 16. La solicitud para continuar eso durante dos semanas hasta junio 11.
Sí, miembros de la Cámara, solicitud para continuar tema número 16 sin objeción.
Y también una solicitud para continuar tema número 24 durante un mes, que sería junio 4.
Sí, solicitud para continuar tema número 24, también sin objeción.
En el programa regular, son presidentes de asuntos 1 a 3. Son asuntos comentados para audiencia pública y no hay ordenanzas.
Temas 1 a 3 no hay audiencia pública, no tengo objeción de los miembros del público para hacer oídos en estos asuntos. Debemos hablar con las audiencias públicas, abrirte cerradas. Alguien quiere llamar a un especial de uno, dos o tres. Algún especial. Diga si ninguno. Señor Dári, por favor, abre la lista. Cierra la lista y tabule el voto.
Trece, sí.
Están aprobados. Proximo asunto, por favor. Porque la audiencia ya se hicieron el asunto 4 al 16. El asunto 4 al 16 enfrente a nosotros. Tengo tarjetas en el asunto número 6, audiencia pública, se hicieron estos asuntos, entonces son de... Tenéis que abrir el asunto. Alguien quiere llamar a algún especial. Señor Makowski.
Seis especiales. Y quiero pedirle a ocho y nueve que vayan al comité de finanzas.
Tema seis, llama especial por el señor Skoski. Tema seis, llamado especial por el señor Makowski. Referido al comité de finanzas. Sin objeción. Ocho y nueve son referidos. Tema 10, llama especial por el señor Garcia. Señor Perry.
Tengo temas siete, he referido presupuesto de finanzas, lo voy a llamar especial entonces, para hacer una referencia.
No, 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 no. Referido al presupuesto de finanzas, referido. Algún otro especial. Dos, se llama especial por el señor Zine. Algún otro especial. Algún otro especial. Diga si ninguno. Señor Dári, por favor, abre la lista, el balance de los asuntos. Por favor, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Trece, sí. Estos están aprobados. Proximo asunto, por favor.
Temas 17 a 28. Tema número 24 ya ha sido actuado y son temas para los que la audiencia pública no se ha hecho.
La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. Miembros de la audiencia pública no se ha hecho. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. Miembros que quieren llamar a algún especial. 17 al 28. Señor Makowski, me gustaría pedirle 18 que se continúe hasta el 11 de junio, que aún no se ha oído por la comisión todavía. Sí, solicitud para continuar el asunto número 18. Tres semanas de hoy sería junio 18. Sin objeción. El asunto 18 va a ser continuado por tres semanas. Algún otro especial. Diga si ninguno. Por favor, abre la lista, el balance de los asuntos. Por favor, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Cuatro, sí. Estos están aprobados. Ahora adelante, el asunto número 20, por favor. Proximo asunto, por favor.
El próximo asunto, señor presidente, es tema número 29, que es la sesión cerrada. ¿Quieres mantenerlo en la mesa? En la agenda complementaria, tema 30 es el mensaje del alcalde que no ha sido recibido, pero se continúa de tener eso para consideración mañana.
Sí, vamos a continuar el asunto sin objeción, 30 por un día. Proximo asunto.
Temas para la audiencia pública que se ha hecho. Temas 31, esos son los reportes de mayoría y minoría. La audiencia pública no se ha hecho. Tengo tarjetas del público para hablar, entonces la audiencia pública se abre. Alguien quiere llamar al 31, el señor Weiss. Vamos a llamar el 31 especial.
Proximo asunto, por favor. Asuntos porque la audiencia pública no se ha hecho. Asuntos 32 al 34. Asunto 32, no tengo tarjetas del público para hacer... Hablar, entonces la audiencia pública está abierta y cerrada. Al miembro que quiera llamar 32, 33, 34 especial. Diga si ninguno. Madre de la Cámara, por favor, abre la lista, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Cuatro, sí. Están aprobados. Proximo asunto.
Necesito reconsiderar el 33.
Sí, señor presidente, vamos a reconsiderar el asunto 33. Por favor, abre la lista en reconsideración. Cierra la lista y tabule el voto. Cuatro, sí. Está reconsiderado. Si quieren llamar al asunto 33 especial, sí. Vamos a tenerlo como especial. Proximo asunto.
Volviendo a los temas, el asunto número seis fue llamado especial por la concejera Makowski. Me gustaría tener un reporte de equipo. Esto se trata de nuestras instalaciones de alto nivel y especificaciones y procedimientos para las aplicaciones y el ingreso de la comunidad. Ha sido mucho tiempo viniendo con los trabajos del comité y creo que el comité llegó con una buena solución. Pero también me gustaría mover el cinco en la audiencia pública. Vamos a empezar con ese.
¿Hay una objeción para el cinco en audiencia pública? Diga si ninguna. Entonces, se va a llamar para adelante a Steve Afriat, seguido por Leslie Daigle y Kathy Delton.
Buenas tardes, presidente de la Cámara, miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. Soy Steve Afriat y represento a Sprint. Estoy aquí en nombre de mi cliente para apoyar la propuesta. Creemos que la Cámara y el comité han hecho un buen trabajo en la elaboración de una propuesta que permitirá que la industria se mueva hacia adelante. Tenemos una preocupación menor y esa preocupación tiene que ver con las restricciones físicas de la construcción en muy pocas localidades. Puede haber instancias en las que es físicamente imposible montar equipamiento, debido a la topografía inestable, tal vez dañando un sistema de raíz que la ciudad no querría dañar. Tal vez el camino de entrada es demasiado estrecho o tal vez haya un poco de agujero subterráneo en ciertas localidades. Cualquiera de esas razones pueden ser. Creemos que la ley requiere que exista un procedimiento de variante donde este cuerpo o un delegado de este cuerpo, el Board of Public Works, Building and Safety, o incluso los oficios municipales individuales tienen anuncios de variante donde es físicamente imposible ubicar sitios subterráneos. Mientras algunos individuos pueden sentir que los sitios pueden simplemente ser reubicados, la nueva tecnología con microsites requiere que los microsites se vean unos a otros. Así que ubicar un medio de media milla por el camino o hacer otras alternativas a eso no sería efectivo. Esperamos que la Cámara considere cualquier tipo de procedimiento de variante en el caso de que la construcción sea imposible. Muchas gracias.
Buenas tardes, presidente de la Cámara, miembros de la Cámara de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Leslie Daigle y represento a Verizon Wireless. Estamos de acuerdo con la preocupación expresada por Sprint. En el departamento de transporte de la ciudad, publicamente declaró razones para oponerse a la construcción. Es costoso, hay problemas ambientales, también consideraciones de espacio. Intentamos montar dentro de la estructura espaguetiada. Y como algunas personas no les gustan las luces de tráfico y no les gustan las luces de calle, ahora no les gustan las antenas, pero son todos elementos de la comunidad moderna. Y hemos puesto esta infraestructura de alto nivel en Beverly Hills y en las comunidades provinciales de Palos Rodeos. Y el carácter estético de estas comunidades sigue intacto. Nuestra preocupación con la construcción es que se exige un 15% de la área de la ciudad. Para colocar nuestra instalación de alto nivel, tendríamos que obtener una petición de 80% de los residentes para decir sí. Y realmente no vemos a nadie saliendo de la limpieza para una compañía de celular o para Starbucks o para Home Depot. Y si la ciudad requería un 80% de voto de aprobación para la construcción en la ciudad, probablemente no hubiera mucha construcción. Lo que nos preocupa es que los cuatro propietarios que viven en la proximidad de esa instalación decidan la política de wireless. Así que esto es verdaderamente una aplicación de tu autoridad. Y incluso cuando demostramos que es técnicamente infeasible, es financieramente infeasible y sin el sitio, hay un margen de cobertura, una prohibición de entrada, todavía tenemos que obtener esa petición del 80%. Así que solicitamos que la Cámara considere otro mecanismo para reducir la dificultad.
Gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Kathy Deladani y represento al Aliado de propiedades de Tarzana. El Aliado de propiedades de Tarzana respalda el informe analista acerca de este proceso de aprobación de instalaciones de alto nivel. Las instalaciones de alto nivel producen iluminación visual si no están camoufladas correctamente. Estas cajas de equipamiento no deben estar puestas en medio de los puentes obstruyendo el camino de entrada para los pedestrians o los porteros. Y esto ocurrió hace tres años cuando la concejera Skoski hizo una moción ante el auditorio hasta que los procedimientos pudieran ponerse en marcha. Ahora es el momento de poner esos procedimientos en marcha porque nadie quiere tener cuatro, cinco, seis cajas en frente de su propiedad que serían grafitadas. Sería como tener una fila de bolsillos de noticias enfrente de su casa. Por favor, voten para poner este proceso y política en efecto hoy.
Gracias. Esto concluye el comentario público del tema número seis. Señor Rudy Thomas.
Gracias, señor presidente y miembros de la Cámara. Déjenme solo sugerir lo siguiente, el trabajo que se ha hecho por número de oficinas del Consilio, no los menos que el Consilio Distrito 11 debería ser notado. Lo que el comité ha hecho a pesar de considerar... Input de los constituyentes, de la industria, del equipo y de las instituciones respectivas del Consilio acerca de la policía de la que ustedes van a encontrar que sea balanceado. La policía esencialmente busca establecer tamaños uniformes y estándares para la instalación de estos cabinets y otros cabinets que están instalados en el camino del público. También establece ciertos requisitos de la paisaje de estas estructuras para la mitigación de graffiti, peatones. También de los peatones nosotros tomamos muy en serio las cuestiones que vinieron a nuestra atención y hemos buscado hacer esto tan amigable para los... Yo creo que como el portavoz que han oído de los estudiantes basados también en los lugares industriales, representantes de las industrias, de las personas que hemos resuelto lo que se ha hecho, más de dos años de cuestiones. Hemos reconciliado lo más que sea razonable y yo creo que tenemos una política que protege los intereses de los estudiantes y al mismo tiempo avanza el prospecto de la industria de las comunicaciones para moverse por un nivel más alto de servicio por este medio. Señor presidente, miembros del Consilio, yo creo que como resultado de varios audiencias en el comité y en los que procedió, el comité tomando la jurisdicción, ahora estamos preparados para adaptar eso que está enfrente de nosotros. Ha resultado el trabajo del analista legislativo, la cámara de ingeniería y mucho como dije anteriormente, de lo que se ha puesto del público en esta política y es significante y va a hacer lo que dice. Entonces, con eso, simplemente les digo a ustedes que está presentado por su comité para voto unánime.
Gracias, señor Rudy Thomas. Antes de llamar al próximo orador, creo que Makowski tenía una presentación en el eje, creo que es necesario. Creo que estuvo muy bien encapsulado por él. Señor Rudy Thomas, que es el presidente del comité.
Sí, yo me levanto soporto, pero creo que eso es algo que ya ha pasado bastante. Y yo quiero comentarle a señor Makowski por traerlo para adelante. La única pregunta que yo haría es que la industria ha pedido una variante de proceso para cuando no hay otra manera de... ¿No tenemos una nueva process de variante que trabajamos?
Señor Bryson, esto se trata no solo del lado de planificación, sino también del trabajo público. Y sí, en esta política hay un ahorro de dificultad, se llama, que el Board de Public Works puede dar cuando un apuntador determina o presenta evidencia para mostrar que es financieramente infeasible y cosas como la calificación, afectar los ríos y tener muchas consecuencias más serias.
No sé si financieramente infeasible es la única excusa, porque creo que la industria siempre lo considera infeasible. Espero que requiera otras circunstancias aparte de la infeasibilidad financiera. ¿Alguien puede contestar eso para mí?
El lenguaje dice específicamente que ocurre cuando el PAF de la localidad es financieramente infeasible y todas las alternativas razonables se han exhausto. Así que hay algo...
Estoy satisfecho con eso, entonces voy a votar yo con eso.
Señor Galanter.
Creo que siempre es correcto dar al miembro del Consilio del distrito un saludo cuando circunstancias que no hemos previsto surgen, que lo hacen todo el tiempo. Y voy a cambiar el lenguaje de dificultad para agregar después de las palabras financieramente infeasibles o cuando hay limitaciones físicas, restricciones topográficas o exceso de agujeros subterráneos existentes y todas las alternativas razonables se han exhaustas. cite para usted como ejemplo el agujero subterráneo que existe en la plaza de Venice y cuando intentamos... Finalmente lo intentamos, pero cuando intentamos arreglar la plaza de Venice y modernizarla y tomarla del estado, el proyecto había estado en los libros durante 27 años. Lo asustó, supongo, una serie de miembros del Consilio y burócratas que tuvieron que hacerlo. Pero lo que aprendimos es que hay bajo nuestras calles muchos tipos de cables y muchas clases de utilidades y a veces están tan enganchados que realmente no sabes lo que hay debajo. Creo que es importante recordar que las cosas salen que nadie vio y siempre pasan. Y es lo mejor, yo creo que es que por lo menos provee la oportunidad de alguien que evalúe las circunstancias no esperadas. Así que voy a cambiar ese amendment y espero que alguien lo acepte y que lo apoye.
Esta es la moción, la segunda, señor Makowski.
Creo que vamos a estar tratando de hablar con algunas palabras para decir lo mismo que el reporte del comité. Conveye eso en las palabras que leí. No tengo dificultad en agregar otras palabras a eso, pero, de hecho, el oficio del Consilio es parte del proceso para otorgar un acuerdo con el consentimiento del oficio. Así que esos tipos de cosas creo que podrían ser usados en términos de hablar de una alternativa razonable, habiendo sido exhaustos, la única alternativa a la construcción siendo que hay mucho más en la calle en un nivel subservio que necesitaría mover algunos de los campamentos, algunos de los líneas de gas de alta presión u otra. Así que creo que el propósito es el mismo, pero no tengo problema con la aclaración adicional. Solo iba a indicar que, de hecho, creo que la solicitud hecha fue razonable. Creo que fue dirigida a esto. También quiero acompliar a muchas, muchas, muchas personas en la industria que participaron, muchas, muchas, muchas personas en la comunidad de propietarios de la casa. El Board de Public Works y los bureaues han estado estupendos en un esfuerzo de tres o cuatro años que ha estado cambiando todo el tiempo. No hubo antes una propuesta que se adelantara cuando había un nuevo modelo industrial, un nuevo tipo industrial. Y realmente acomodo al señor Rudy Thomas, que reconoció que esto fue primero como ordenanza, que hay tal cambio en la tecnología hoy. is such change in technology today, such change in what is out there, that to try to fashion an ordinance and having to change it every time something new came along did not make sense. So do it as comprehensively as possible, but in this policy, so that even today, as we're tinkering with the policy, with some language to address all the concerns that each of us have, I think is a reasonable way to deal with it. For the members who were here, what we had seen in the past was just proliferation, particularly in our public rights of way, not just the antennas, which we're all familiar with on the planning side, but the boxes that may be eight feet high, ten feet high, that was starting to proliferate on our sidewalks and our rights of way, that were taking away from pedestrian access, interfering with being able to get out of a vehicle on a passenger side and get to a curb and a sidewalk. And there just was not a rule or regulation that made sense. This policy attempts to codify it, recognizing that this is an ever-changing field, but also recognizes in certain areas in our scenic corridors, in our specific plan areas, in those areas of historical preservation, and in many areas that mattered, we really should be undergrounding these things. That is what is done in other communities where it's not undergrounded, it needs to be well landscaped and well-spaced in terms of the kinds of consideration and criteria that is set forth in this policy. So I very strongly recommend its approval. I have no problem with the language Ms. Galanter was suggesting, because I think it's embodied in the language that Mr. Rudy Thomas brought forward, it's just a further clarification where she's talking about physically infeasibility, which is exactly the same thing Mr. Avery was talking about from another perspective. Ruth is talking about other undergrounding things that are there that could interfere. Steve is talking about the level, the condition of the ground itself, in which you might underground something which might be unstable. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and I ask for his support.
Mr. Holden? Mr. President, members of the... If someone can answer this, when they talk about financially infeasible, I think that may be some clause that they would use more frequently than the amendment, which deals with space. Physical space limitation, topography. What about this financial infeasibility? Someone say ten thousand dollars, for example, maybe. Financially infeasible. Financially infeasible. And they'll get estimates which will show that it's ten thousand dollars. And therefore they have to do it at a low level. Maybe someone can answer that. Mr. Thomas, I think you want to respond to what those two amendments. Financially infeasible is something that I think has got to be pretty much fixed cap. There's got to be some numbers there.
Mr. President, members of the council, this matter was dealt with some degree of rigor in committee. I think what is being attempted now is an effort to revisit it, and of course, that's appropriate, but I can assure you that it is already satisfied. Sadie, if you would simply come forward. There is some question as to whether or not this rises to the level of being a significant policy consideration. Some would argue yes, others would say not, really. I wish it to be appreciated that it's perhaps superfluous in view of the fact that this issue has been dealt with, and we don't want to unwittingly undo the standards that we've set in place by invoking the issue of financial hardship or anything of that sort. I believe we scrub this very carefully, and perhaps an evaluation off the top, Sadie, of whether or not this advances or perhaps is warranted would be useful. I think that the reason we include the statement financial infeasibility is that basically it all comes to money. I think the issue of what's in the ground does have an impact on the finances of it, and we are providing a process here that allows people to come in and show why they shouldn't comply with the policy, and to explain how much it costs, et cetera. I recall that in these places downtown, in which when you put new cable in, you cannot in fact dig with even a shovel. They in fact devised a process where the dirt was taken, vacuumed after water was used because there's so many cables already in the street, and that has a financial impact, and some of these things will, and we'll have to look at them. And the financial impact in one part of town may be different than in another part of town, but I think it's not enough to provide the kind of ability to make adjustments if it's going to cost too much, and to take into account that it's just a use of excuse to not do it. Mr. President, members of the council, I think in committee and the public register will bear this out, we addressed this matter, and I would not like at this point to create anything that would be suggestive of a loophole. I've heard no compelling reason to alter the report as it is before us. The amendment, I think, was offered in a constructive and credible way, but I respectfully request pursuant to the deliberations of the committee and the report of the legislative analysts that would not adopt the amendment and, in fact, proceed with the committee report as it is before you.
Mr. Holden? Mr. Thomas, the report requires that the utilities or whatever the component is to be done subservive and not reelected. There's a standard for that to happen. It doesn't unilaterally impose that in all instances, but we would... Are there some provisions for variation? And those are provisions which I don't get quite clear. Any of them financial? Yes. Do you have some kind of a structure which controls whether or not the truth is being shared with you when it comes to finances?
Yes. And we go through that to the Bureau of Engineering, and there's a standard that is, the planning department has been involved in it, so we have lined up what uniform standards we apply and given specific requirements as to the distance between the facilities and what circumstances under which they cannot be placed and the like, and so what we're trying to do is just keep it as tight as is reasonable.
All right, so you're recommending the committee report as submitted without any amendments? Correct. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Galanter?
Do we have a standard for financially infeasible? It's been my experience that everybody claims everything's financially infeasible. So part of my goal here was to give us some other criteria that we could use besides when the applicant comes in and says, gee, I'm sorry, you know, there are variations. It doesn't pencil and so on.
I think that if we have a dollar amount, no. I think that the, but all those things that you mentioned do, in essence, at the end of the day, the people are not going to want to do it, not because there's clutter in the ground or because of topography or anything else, they're not going to do it. It costs too much money. And what's going to happen?
They're going to have to decide, or somebody's going to have to decide, whether it's really financially infeasible or not. We're going to have some basis for making that decision besides that they said so.
I agree with, we have set a process where the Bureau of Engineering has to do an analysis, and then it goes through the board of public works. And it depends...
And does the, excuse me, I'm sorry, you were talking, but does the applicant then reimburse for the cost of the Bureau of Engineering going out to determine whether it's financially infeasible?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. I'm sorry. So, Ms. Galanter, I think you'd appreciate that we really went as far as it was reasonable to accommodate the applicants, and in addition to that, we built in the appropriate levels of discretion and all of that in the context of uniformity. So it is my view that we have negotiated this very, very carefully and been most accommodating to the industry, which is a reasonable thing to do in this sense, and at the same time, go on the distance and making sure that communities are appropriately protected, that is the issue of public safety as well as aesthetics. These are the two issues that are of considerable concern to us, and obviously, the third point would be the attention that is paid to high-quality service pursuant to the respective telecommunications providers being able to do their work in a high-quality way. Members of the council, may I once again ask that you adopt the committee report as it is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy Thomas. Any other members wish to be recognized? We have both the committee report as well as the amendment motion. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the amending motion. Members of the council have no vote on the amending motion. The roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Close the roll. The roll is open. No vote on the amendment. Members, I'm not sure that the members are aware of what is going on right now. Mr. Rudy Thomas, I've done my best to articulate that we were voting, would you object to an assist? How about now you? Well, we'll do our best. Mr. Clerk, please reopen the roll. The roll is open. The roll is open. The committee report is satisfactory. This is the amending motion we're voting on. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Eight ayes, six noes. That is approved. We now have the committee report as amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Fourteen ayes. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number ten called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. This allows us to begin investigating something which San Francisco is going to be experimenting with on voting, which is employed in a number of countries. Basically, what it does is it saves the public the expense of a runoff by having people rank their voters. Sorry, rank the candidates. And the lowest candidate gets removed from the list, and the second choice of those becomes the first choice, etc., until there's only one winner. This doesn't necessarily towards this instance, but I think it is something that a lot of people have seen for a long time, as a way of getting around people not wanting to vote for their real first choices. And voting for the second choice, they think is more viable. And this is a great way of us moving forward. We're looking at what San Francisco is going to do six months from now, and assess, or six months after San Francisco does it. I know Councilmember Laban, who was the one, I think, who proposed this, that we do this study. And obviously, I heard your support today, but I hope it's something that we take a good look at, too, in ways of reducing our costs, but also a way of empowering voters to have more choice in their elections. It's a question of a lot of the public, we hear it time and time again, that they only have two choices, and if they don't want to throw their vote away, they'll only vote for their second or third choice. They're not going to vote for the first choice. This is the power of folks potentially able to vote for the first choice the first time, and get more votes there whilst they're not throwing away their rest. I heard your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Holden? Mr. President, members, this is not a good idea at all. Not even to look at. The voters since the beginning of times have been having a runoff election. And that's what the condition for. If you have first and second choice, second choice will get more votes than their first choice, which means second choice would win. So you have to run a different type of campaign. Well, okay, we'll have Mr. Wu run next time. Re-election and put this in place and see what happens. You won't be here. I'm telling you, you can't do that. The voters understand that there'd be two people in runoff if nobody gets fifty percent vote plus one. With this new idea, you can have the second choice, get fifty percent vote plus one of the person who voted for the first choice, the second choice, everybody's second choice can get eighty percent, and they can be winners. Because the second choice could win. Yes, they can. And you will avoid a runoff, because they would get the most votes for the second choice. Second choice would be considered as the first choice. I'm not running, but my God. Don't destroy the process, which really destroys the system. And you have to have, the voters now get educated to vote and say, now, here's your first choice. And here's your second choice. They'll just vote for the first choice. To avoid this kind of a complication, this kind of a mix-up. I don't know where these bright ideas come from, but they don't seem very bright to me. And no, they seem less bright to the voters. And they're more less intelligent for the voters. And I'm not going to even vote to even try to entertain the thought to study it. My votes, no, maybe I won't be here when you have to vote in an audience. But I don't want to be confused by who I vote for, my first choice and my second choice. I want one person I want to vote for. If they get fifty percent of the vote plus one, they don't, they'd have a runoff election. There's no amount of money that can disenfranchise the voter, and that's what this process will do. Disenfranchise the voter to make a selection of who the first choice will be. I just don't understand where this new world is coming to. Thank you, Mr. Laban. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. Holden, the new world is upon us every day. We have an opportunity to think a little differently. I'm going to ask our city clerk, Mike Carey, to give us a justice study. Other cities are doing this. We should study this to see if it applies and could save the city money in its cost of running elections. Frank Martina, sir, the assistant city clerk, executive officer, if you'd just give us a brief analysis. Mike Carey, the city clerk. Basically, I'm going to focus on the instant runoff voting issue. What that does, it allows people to rank the candidates they find acceptable in order of preference, and then the last place finisher, the candidate is removed and those votes are distributed to the other candidates from those votes cast by the folks that voted for that candidate. I rarely am on the side with Mr. Holden, because he's normally beating me up, but I will give you an example in Council District Two that I gave the committee in the Council District Two primary, if instant runoff voting had been available. Taking Mr. Cordero's votes and distributing them equally to Ms. Gruel and Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas wins. Taking the third-place finisher's votes and giving seventy-five percent of them to Ms. Gruel and twenty-five percent to Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Cardenas wins. As I noted to the committee, one of the aspects in an election is often the runoff election has considerably different dynamics, and in this case, you eliminate those dynamics, you eliminate the focus. San Francisco is going to do this, I believe, in two thousand and four. They do have equipment that will allow for the preference choices on their ballot. They will do it for their local offices, not for federal offices. We've committed to look at what happened in San Francisco and report back. One of the arguments is that you save money and time relative to avoiding a runoff election. That is true. You save approximately two months and probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a runoff election. The real question is, do you achieve the voters' preferences when you have this? The proponents of this program basically admit this is a way for minor parties to gain clout. Obviously, in Los Angeles, we don't have partisan elections, but we've indicated we'll come back with a report after San Francisco looks at and implements the process. I believe they're mandated for two thousand and four at the earliest. If I could ask Mr. Kerry Porch, do you think it's a benefit for you, a city clerk, to respond for the elections of Los Angeles to review this and...
...on it in a traditional race. There may be some other kinds of races where this might work, that it has a little less impact and be somewhat more benign. But I think that it's so, there's no harm in adopting this today because it just says, let's look and see what's going on around the country, in our own state. Let's see what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of the technology that might equip us to be able to do it. But I dare say, Mr. Kerry is right. As he attempted to extrapolate and speculate in one council district race here where he thinks the outcome might have been different, I think we can look at any number of very, very, very close races in the last three, four, or five years, or maybe even as Mr. Holden suggested, the mayor's race prior to this one, and the outcome would have been different. And that's what gives me serious, serious pause about whether or not this is and would make sense, because the process as we have had it today has yielded results that people have knowledge about. In fact, it's interesting, some most serious testimony at LACCO, and I think Mr. Burson will agree with me on this, has been issues brought up by those who don't like the idea that in the new Valley City, were there an election for succession, that those running will win with whoever gets the most votes. There is no runoff for council, there is no runoff for mayor, so you could have a person in a new city, if that's to be the choice, who may be elected with less than 20% of the vote, and that will be the leader of that city. So there is something tried and true about our system, our runoff system. We have elevated it. We've elevated it in the sense even when we have had recall elections, where in the past, if there was a recall, whoever got the most votes won. That doesn't happen anymore. We now have a runoff system. So I'm more comfortable with that process, but I think there's no harm in looking and seeing what else is going on around the country and looking at particularly legal issues that may arise as a consequence of it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you colleagues for those comments. I think it's important, as Cindy Viskasky mentioned, that this is, to clarify, today this is, we're talking about modernizing our voting instruments, and that's a critical thing to be voting on first and foremost. Just think about Florida, think about what happened. We need to do that. Secondly, it's just facts, it's just information. And this doesn't come out of academic circles, this comes out of, among other places, Instant Runoff Voting Coalition and other folks. The Progressive Los Angeles Network last year, which is about 300 to 400 grassroots organizations in Los Angeles endorse this. The AFL-CIO sits on that board, the Sierra Club sits on that board, the National Organization for Women sits on that board. This does not disempower anybody, and it's good to have this debate. What disempowers people right now is our system. My colleague called it tried and true. It's also tried and true that we celebrate here when we get 25% in our municipal elections. We celebrate that when we get 1 out of 2 people in our federal elections. That's what disempowers people, is a system right now that nobody wants to even turn out to vote for, because they don't have much of a choice. They don't feel that they have much of a choice. This is not about ease, this is about power. It's not about expenses, though those are nice things on the side. I don't think George Bush would vote for abolishing electoral system. So I know a lot of us have a stake in keeping the system the way it is. But bold ideas in terms of just sticking them through and finding out that information, this is just information. That's not asinine. That seems to make sense, that seems to be prudent. There are countries that do this, there are cities that are going to be looking at doing this. They have often democracies in which the voter turnout is much higher. If you look at Australia and other places, obviously the tax helps there. But at one point, when you look at state legislatures having selected our senators, when you look at electoral system, electoral college, that took away a presidential popular vote in this past time, I think it behooves us a little bit to try to think creatively about how we get people involved, long after the expense issues are done with, and I think we can stand by those too. Senator Iberi, thank you. Mr. Holden?
San Francisco, is there a partisan race?
Not for the local.
What's local?
Of their council members.
All right, fine. Now what about the other cities that are entertaining this process?
Basically, the other cities have made it as an option to use in the case of vacancies, but to my knowledge, to my knowledge, none have actually utilized the issue.
Not for regular elections?
That's correct.
For vacancy.
But San Francisco's...
I think that Mr. Garcetti said that, in case there's a vacancy in an election as an option. I mean, you've been instructed to take a look at this as if we're going to use it maybe for every election.
Well, if you use it at all, Mr. Holden, you're still going to have the need to get certain specialized voting equipment that can handle the preference, can tally the process. Right now, we do not have equipment that can...
Did I understand you to say that if you're the last person to be chosen number one, your votes will be allocated proportionally for the one, the next percentage basis?
Yes.
Without the person designating that that's where they wanted their vote to go?
Correct. You just take the choices that were made by that, for that candidate, their number two choices then go to...
Oh, but someone has to vote for them to be at number two?
Yes, you have to indicate your preference.
For number one and number two?
Again, having been in this business for a few years, I've also seen where people purposely punch out all 16 names on the mayor's race, because at that point, they're not sure who they want to vote, or they purposely do not vote for anyone.
So you can have a situation where the total ballot cast would be reduced by the number of ballots that have been thrown out because there is not probably voter out. So therefore, you could probably end up deciding who's going to win the election on the minority number of votes cast.
Correct.
Well, here once again, you are interfering with the process, in my view. The voter would be disenfranchised from even selecting what they consider to be the number one candidate of their choice, in the interest of trying to save money or save money for ethics, whichever the case may be. I think first and foremost, the public would like to have the right to make a decision who they want to represent. And they want to vote, I want this person, and not, I want this person, if they don't get it, I want that person. At that point, the second person, the second choice, is to be more persuasive, as it was in this screw place. Let them campaign, two of them, state their positions to the public, run on the issues, what they would do good for government, and how much better they would be as a candidate than the other person. To do this, to run camp, I could win a campaign like this, of course. If I'm not your first choice, which I hope that I am, let me be your second choice. And you run a different kind of campaign, it's a different kind of strategy. But the public is not aware of that, and it's going to take some time to roll that over. I would say that not even bother to look at it. Give the public a choice. If you want the public to decide this, put it on the ballot and let them decide if they want to vote for first or second choice. And the answer sure is going to be no, I'm sure. And all the press will come out against it. If they give it in the process, to interfere with the process and deny the person their right to vote, really is disenfranchising the voter.
Mr. Holden, this would require a charter change. So again, we're going to take a look at what happens in San Francisco from a factual standpoint, and then report back to the council. And if the council wanted to move forward, then it would require a charter amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please open the roll. Roll is open, please close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 12 called special by councilmember Zine.
Before we proceed to item number 12, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas, you wish to be recognized?
On reconsideration. The prevailing parties would have to do that, sir. You would be one of them.
Okay, is there a motion from the floor? Not at the present time. Mr. Zine on the next item.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I have some questions regarding this issue on guns, and I want to preface it by stating that I'm an advocate for safe communities, and the gun violence and the cost of lives is out of control. But there was a 2001 California Supreme Court ruling that upheld the immunity, and I'm concerned with the liability if, in fact, we push for this, this special protection they have. How many other businesses have this special protection? There's someone from the city attorney's office, C.L.A., who can answer that. Also, the laws regarding suits, would the city then become a party to lawsuits when, in fact, someone is shot by a weapon in the city limits? Would it be the party who was shot who would be involved in that civil litigation? And I'm concerned about any other states that have this or similar rules that permit those lawsuits? And are there any gun manufacturers in the city of Los Angeles or in the state of California? Whether the city attorney or the C.L.A. has those answers also. The C.L.A. has not completed a financial analysis on this report, but I'm concerned about the impact if, in fact, we're going against the California Supreme Court ruling of 2001, when this was tested and the court said that they're not liable.
Michael Karch with the Legislative Analyst Office. AB496 would change statutory law regarding the liability of gun manufacturers. Hence, the Supreme Court decision that was arrived at in last August on the liability of Navagare for the violence that occurred in San Francisco in 1993 would be reversed because the Supreme Court decision was based on statutory law. This particular bill changes that statutory law in order to imply or to impose product liability on gun manufacturers.
The category special immunity, does that apply to any other manufacturers? Or is there, as you cited, that California statute, that Civil Code statute?
1740.
Is there any other businesses that have similar protection, or is it just for that gun industry?
I don't know. There is product liability for many different products, as to whether it's special liability, that's a different word, I'd have to defer to the city attorney on that.
City attorney, have that answered?
I don't have that information, you would have to get back to me on that.
Do you know if any other states have similar legislation?
I do not.
And what about gun manufacturers in this region? Do we have any?
Not that I know of.
Pardon me?
The Saturday night specials all used to be made here, they are no longer made here.
Here in the city of Los Angeles, they're gone. Okay. And as far as the liability, would the city then be a party, part of that liability when it comes to filing suit against the manufacturer? If someone or a residence is shot, would we then become a party, or could we become a party against the gun manufacturers?
In my uninformed opinion, I would say no, but I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Do we have a city attorney who could answer that?
I haven't looked in detail at that point, but I will tell you that people can sue the city for, you know, they do attach us, and then if we can, we demur and get out of the lawsuit if it doesn't apply to us. But a lot of times, it doesn't matter, people will sue us, name us anyway.
I'm talking about the city suing the manufacturer. We would sue the manufacturer.
Oh.
If one of our residents, one of our visitors is shot with a weapon, whatever weapon that is, would we then be able to sue the manufacturer for someone in our jurisdiction being shot?
I'd have to look really closely at the bill. I would not think that that would be, that we would not sue.
So what this would do is then permit the person who is shot or a survivor the ability to sue the manufacturer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other speakers? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please open the roll on item number 12. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes, one nose.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 31 called special, and there is a majority and minority report on the file.
Okay, before proceeding with item 31, let me remind members of the council, members of the public, both on item number 12, which we have just completed, as well with item 31, public hearings have been held in committee. Some motions from the floor are required to reopen the public hearings. Any other business before we take up item 31? Seeing none, then item 31, Madam Clark. Called special by Mr. Weiss.
Yes, and there is a majority and minority report.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Before us today is item 31, is the report of the Ad Hoc Committee on Redistricting with respect to the L.A. Unified School District map. And I just want to review a little bit of the history for all of you, so we know exactly how this got here and why this got here. I mean, fundamentally, what this was, was an example of an experiment in citizen democracy, an experiment in the participatory process that worked. The people who sat on the Charter Commission, including many of our current colleagues, decided that they wanted to take the process of redistricting out of smoke-filled rooms, out of the back halls of government, and put it in front of the people. Now, what they did was they created a citizen commission that would do the redistricting process for the school board, and a citizen commission that performed the redistricting process for the council. And then, those two commissions voted, they went through their process, and each of them presented to the city council a map. Before you today is a map which, with one set of exceptions, which on the overall scheme of things are not major, we're not talking about a lot of people, before you today is a map which essentially is the map that the citizen commission presented to the council. And before all of you in a week or two, I predict, will be a map with respect to the city council, which again, with an exception or two, will very closely, very, very, very closely resemble, if not indeed be identical, to the map presented to us by the citizen commission for the council. That is important. We need to show deference and respect to the citizens who served on this public commission and did the work and did the effort and presented their best efforts to us. Those best efforts are before us right now, and in this instance, it was voted out of committee by vote 3 to 2. There are a number of things in this map which I'd like to highlight for you. I'll just take a moment or two to do that, but I want to say that everything that I'm going to tell you has been a matter of knowledge which has been before this council for several months, because we've all been on notice for several months, ever since the citizen commission presented its report. We've all been on notice as to what was in there. A couple of things that I am particularly proud of, and I'm proud to be supporting. The map before you puts the unincorporated portions of East Los Angeles and the Southeast cities together for the very first time, which gives these areas the opportunity to elect a representative to the L.A. Unified School Board who is not from the city of Los Angeles. And I have asked people, there's probably someone in this room who knows the answer to the question, but I don't. When was the last time someone who did not live in the city of Los Angeles, when was the last time that such a person actually served on the board of the L.A. U.S.D.? I don't know the answer. It would be, it's either not that recent, or it's not a very big number, if indeed the number is in zero. And that is a terrific thing. The ad hoc map that's before you complies with the Voting Rights Act. It has two full seats for the San Fernando Valley. And at Mr. Garcetti's suggestion, a week and a half ago, and I think it was a very sound suggestion, our committee went the extra mile under the Voting Rights Act and decided that, in an abundance of caution, and in a reflection of the fact that we were listening to one of the key constituencies that is represented before the committee and before the council, a constituency that had as its voice Maldif, Mr. Garcetti made a motion which the committee passed to incorporate certain changes into the map that had been suggested in the first instance by the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund. In some colleagues, what is before you is what was put before this council a couple months back by the citizen commission, with the exception of Mr. Garcetti's amendment which was passed. We are ready, and I think it's incumbent upon us to follow through on this experiment in participatory democracy by supporting the efforts of the citizens who served on this commission and supporting the map that the committee has put before you today, and therefore, Mr. President, I move the committee's majority report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. There's two things I wanted to do. One, Council President, Council President Padilla? I wanted to know if I should start my discussion now? Would I like to make a motion to open up the public hearing if possible? We have people here that came from the Valley wanting to speak. How somebody we can do that? Okay. Well, let's hear the public hearing, open it up.
There's a motion to reopen the public hearing. Let's take a vote on this. Members? Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes, what's your desire, five minutes, 10 minutes?
Courtesy, five minutes.
Okay, we do have quite a few cards. Members, there's a motion to reopen the public hearings and to conduct a five-minute hearing here in council. Madam Clark, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, then unanimously, the public hearing is now reopened. As I mentioned, there are quite a few cards, members of the public who wish to be heard on this item. I would ask that, as we call you forward, to know that brevity would be appreciated. Previous speakers have made the point that you are wishing to make, please make every attempt to not be too repetitive, and we'll give each speaker, let's say, about a minute. That'll take us more than five minutes if we're going to want to get through all these cards. Even less would be even better. Beginning with Elizabeth Ginsburg, followed by Alan Clayton, Paul Miguel Escola, and John Perez.
Thank you, members of the council. I represent the Association of Retired Teachers, and we have been taking a look at this because we have closely monitored the meetings of Los Angeles School Board for many points of view, particularly concerned about the improvements that can be made within the school district in terms of children's needs, teachers' needs, retired teachers' needs, et cetera. Our view of this proposal is that it would eliminate a person who has been a long-served, who has long-served the L.A. School District in a very merititious way, who has made a point of making connections throughout the community with pupils, with parents, with teachers, who's very familiar with the needs of the community. And I think you need to look very carefully at making it possible to eliminate a person with that type of expertise.
I ask you to conclude, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clayton, followed by Mr. Escola and Mr. Perez.
My name is Alan Clayton, I'm here representing the California Latino Redistricting Coalition. I drew basically map two. I'm here to speak in favor of the Reyes map, which keeps the Valley as we drew it in map two, where there was overwhelming testimony at the hearing, 97% in support, and it puts in the east, northeast, southeast, as was designed in the Keely map. I think it's a compromise. Obviously, I like map two the best, but in terms of trying to get this through the process and compromising, I think that the overwhelming testimony in the Valley, I think you should take a very close look at map, the Reyes compromise map, and I think it is a compromise map. They went through the process and looked at both maps, and I hope you do that, because I think what you're going to do is fuel succession with the Keely map. The other thing is, Maldif did not endorse either map. They basically worked on map two revision and map one revision and added basically some issues with that, because I worked with Maldif, and it's also been said on the record that, so to say that Maldif is map one is not, is not correct. They worked on both maps. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you go against map one's device, it will help fuel succession.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton, Mr. Escola, followed by John Perez, Gladys Roseman, and Dehiguchi. One minute, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I am Paul Miguel Escola, Chief of Staff to L.A. U.S.D. School Board Member Mike Lansing of the Southern District. Mr. Lansing could not be with us this morning due to an urgent personal matter. However, he wanted me to speak on his behalf this morning. Mr. Lansing offers his full and unwavering support of the map that both the L.A. U.S.D. Redistricting Commission and the City Council's Ad Hoc Committee on Redistricting approved and recommended, otherwise known as map one. This map represents countless hours of testimony, input, and comments from individual members of the public, from all corners of the district. This map has been vetted not only by just one, but two publicly established committees, and it is the most fair and equitable map to school district stakeholders as it keeps school communities together. Furthermore, we ask that the council approve the recommended map in a timely fashion so both our government entities can get back to the pressing and urgent needs of our mutual constituencies. Therefore, we ask for your endorsement of a new L.A. U.S.D. map that reflects the ever-changing dynamics of this diverse school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Perez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Perez. I'm the president-elect of UCLA, but I want to talk briefly about the fact that I live in the Valley. I've lived in the Valley all my life. I went to the public schools in the Valley and to San Fernando State before it was Cal State Northridge. My daughters are products of the L.A. U.S.D. I am unalterably opposed to breaking up this city or breaking up the school district. Map number one will fuel the anger of the people in San Fernando Valley against the city and will encourage breakup. I know this because my colleagues and my neighbors tell me this every single day of my life. We are here to support the Reyes map. I want this city to remain whole, I want the district to remain whole. Map number one is going to fuel breakup. Map number two is a much better map. It does bring the communities of the school communities together. It doesn't have Taft High School with Westchester High School as map number one does. Please vote for the Reyes compromise map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladys Roseman, followed by Dehiguchi, Ed Burke, and Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to speak as a person who lives in the Valley. I have four children that all went to school in the Valley. And I think that the second map, the Reyes map, is much better for the Valley. It does not, okay, all right, it does not break the Valley up into little pieces, it has two districts in the Valley and keeps the Valley whole. And that's what I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Higuchi.
Dehiguchi, current president of United States of Los Angeles, also our position's the same as S.C.I.U.'s. You need to understand that no matter how the commission process was characterized, the first commission at the school district level initially deadlocked before voting out what has been known as a Keely map, so there's not exactly an overwhelming consensus. Secondly, all you have to be able to do is count. You realize that 97% of the people at the Valley hearing in the first commission and over 90% of 500 people at the second commission hearing, only two spoke against what is now being, what would be the top half of the Reyes map. That is the overwhelming consensus of the entire Valley. Maldif has taken no position on any map and is, basically, it's equal both ways, the Reyes map or the one that came out of your commission. And finally, the map that actually keeps most school communities together is the Reyes map, if you do some careful counting and reconsider that. Thank you very much. I think I know you'll vote for the map that best represents the people of this area.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Burke, followed by Monica Rodriguez, Linda Bear, and Andrew Glaser.
Good morning. I'm Ed Burke, a citizen. If we listen to the inspirational power of this morning, if we want to look to a higher authority, I think the higher authority down here on earth is the citizen. And I think what has happened in this reorgement process here is that the citizen has been ignored. At all of the commission meetings, if you went to any of them, if you heard about any of them, they were overwhelmingly in favor of what was then called map two, now which encompasses the Reyes map there. It is something that everyone, Mr. Garcetti this morning said something about what disenfranchises voters, what gets them upset, what gets them uninterested, is when they're not listened to. And I think that here, once again, we had a process that we invited, we invited the citizen then to participate, and then we didn't pay any attention to him. The citizens' commission... The citizens' commission, it was a good start, but again, we had the citizens' commission almost acting as the smoke-filled backroom politics.
I'm asking you to conclude, please.
Okay, thank you. I think you get my point.
Thank you very much. Monica Rodriguez.
Good morning, council members. I'm here this morning speaking on behalf of School Board President Capricion, who was unable to join us this morning, but just wanted to reiterate our support for the L.A. U.S.D. Redistricting Commission and Ad Hoc Committee's recommended map, which is commonly called map one. It has gone through an extensive public process, both through committee as well as through our L.A. Unified Redistricting Commission, and it enjoys a wealth of support across L.A. Unified. Also, this map has the full, has the majority support of board members for L.A. Unified, so we just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Linda Bear, followed by Andrew Glaser and Julian Gorgoni.
Good morning. My name is Linda Bear. I'm the vice chair of the Los Angeles County Democratic Party. In March, we passed a resolution supporting map two. We feel that that is the best plan for including all of the city, and it's the best plan for our students. This has been said, I think it bears repeating. People don't vote because they think nobody listens to them. At the hearings I've gone to, they've overwhelmingly supported map two. It's time to start listening to the people. It's really time. 25% voter turnout doesn't excite me, guys. I like the, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Andrew Glaser, and I am a deputy for School Board Member Marlene Cantor. I'm here speaking on behalf of her in support of map number one, the map that was recommended by the Redistricting Committee as well as, the Redistricting Commission as well as your own ad hoc Redistricting Committee after extensive public hearing and deliberation. The map, Ms. Cantor feels that the map is based on principles that best serve the children of Los Angeles Unified, high school attendance areas, communities of interest, and of course, the Voting Rights, the Voting Rights Act. Based on these principles, she supports map one and respectfully requests that this council adopt the recommended map as soon as possible so that we can get back to doing everything else that we need to do. It is supported by the majority of the school board, as well as by a majority of the Redistricting Commission and, of course, the Ad Hoc Committee. Thank you very much.
And finally, Mr. Julian Gorgoni.
Good morning, council members. My name is Julian Gorgoni. I'm a deputy here on behalf of Julie Kornstein, representing the hundreds and thousands of constituents that she would be here to represent if she weren't in closed session. I simply want to say, the map that came before you, recommended by the Redistricting Commission, a majority, almost a simple majority of the Redistricting Commission, did not have, did not include within it the possibility of compromise. During the commission process, the offer was made in the discussion to try and find a way to include the elements that would satisfy 97% of the Valley constituents and perhaps an equal number of the city constituents. The Ed Reyes map that is before you now is the first such compromise to be considered. This is a map that would satisfy the Valley, and it would satisfy the city. There is no remaining criticism between map, from map one of map two, or rather, from the Reyes map of the Keely map that's currently amended, or vice versa. If you check the record, there is nothing to discourage passing the Reyes map on testimony from any of the constituencies.
Please conclude, please. Thank you very much. This concludes, once again, public comment for item 31. Returning to council discussion, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, council president and colleagues. I sat here before you today not because it's a Reyes map. What I'm advocating here for is the children and our city. And I looked at both map one and two, and on this one, I managed to get a lot of people angry. But truly, my objective was, how is it that we present a policy that acknowledges the needs of our children? And I'm not saying that the committee members or the commission did not, but for whatever reason, we end up down to the points of whose side to run, and this is much too important to conduct ourselves with politics as usual. What we should be doing is looking at what the facts demonstrate. The facts are that 4.4 million residents within the L.A. U.S.D. boundaries, there was only documented testimony from 118 non-redundant speakers, and we received 145 letters. Both map one and two were lukewarm at best, but what map three does, it brings together all the feeder systems within the Valley. It allows for the schools to remain intact, and we looked at Mulholland as the natural boundary, which means we're listening. We're listening to the people in the Valley, and we're basically qualifying, lessening this fuel for succession because we are paying attention to that group. And so what I try to do is get the best of map one and map two and form map three. At the lower half of the map three, what it does, it keeps the feeder systems and does all the things that Councilman Wise spoke to, in keeping the southeast, southeast schools intact, the outbound area feeder systems intact, all the feeder systems that are there. As a matter of fact, the report that we have, that we received this morning, that is supposed to be building up from the commission report, is erroneous. It states that map three, that Granada Hills, Winnetka, and Warner Center are split as community splits, and that's not true. Granada Hills, Winnetka, and Warner Center remains intact. As far as our high school attendance area splits, map three keeps Birmingham together, Alcamino, Granada Hills, Reseda, and Marshall, keeps them together. So those of us who have those schools in our districts, which we pay attention to what we're doing to our kids because we're splitting up those feeder schools. Bottom line is that, if you look at the various districts, you look at Councilman Wise's district, Taft, Reseda, and Birmingham stay complete. They're not split. When you look at Councilman Labaja's district, Hollywood and Marshall stays intact. When you start looking at Councilman Padilla, Granada Hills, Birmingham, Reseda, Taft, Alcamino Real, they all stay intact. So I was very, very cognizant of trying to keep our vision of what we think is best for our children intact, and trying to keep the feeder schools together.
Mr. Reyes.
In conclusion, at the very least, we should send this and give ourselves some time to go on fighting, or continue still fighting, so we can look at what's happening in our district. And that continues, give us a chance to look at the reports. We just received the reports this morning. But at best, I think it should go back to committee to understand what these errors mean and how it affects our communities.
Is that a motion to continue or a motion to refer back to committee?
My first motion would be to continue, but if I can get a second, to continue, let's do that.
There's a motion and a second.
Yes.
Let's hear from other members before we actually take a vote.
Okay. But just in closing, this is not about the interest groups that have been playing out the scenarios. This is about how are we able to look at our kids in a manner that they deserve. He talking about, we're going to eliminate gangs, we're going to look at how we can support our communities, and we are denying them the most basics, education. This is far too serious to just go on today. Thank you.
Thank you. Before going on to the next speaker, we did receive an additional speaker card. I want to extend the courtesy to School Board Member David Tokowski.
Good afternoon, members of the council, council president. I'm here to speak to you, to encourage you to stop and think for a moment, to take a look at the details that are crucial to this particular decision. Let me read to you from the commission, a commission that was created through charter reform, charter reform that some of you were commissioners on. On March 13th, 7:00 p.m., Wednesday, Stephen Ochoa of Maldef testifies, "As far as I can tell, as far as we can tell, both plans," referring to map one and map two, "appear to satisfy the Voting Rights Act." Further, and I sent this and will submit it here, on March 20th, the following Wednesday, City Attorney of Los Angeles, Hines, remarks, "While we look at these maps, I'm going to speak now not just on the basic legal issues of compactness, contiguous communities of interest, which is referred to the high school families and so on, but as to the voting rights aspects. There's no magic talisman or number that has to be met to say that the map is legal or not. What we're looking for is the ability of minority communities to elect a representative of their choice. And we look to see whether at a minimum that's going to be upheld." And then City Attorney Hines says, "And we feel that both maps have the minimum requirements necessary to meet the Voting Rights Act requirements." Author of the first map, Keely, responds back. "It would be surprising, then, City Attorney, then, if we adopted either of these maps and then got an opinion from your office saying you were concerned about that." So you've spent enough time on it to have a reasonable level of confidence that both will pass your scrutiny. City Attorney's response, "That's correct." I submit these to you as transcripts from the public hearings regarding these, and I call on you to honor the process, to look at what the Board of Education has communicated to you through its individual members, and to do what I heard you just doing. Look at the feeder patterns and the communities of interest was the overriding principle."
Thank you.
The Marshall High School complex is hacked in half, hacked. It's split on Commonwealth rather than Western or what map one proposes at the Coanga Pass. Similarly, the map one has amended. Remembered, it's amended. It is not the one that the commission presented. Takes away the Franklin feeder community. It takes away Nightingale Junior High School from District Five, and it takes away Argon Elementary School, and it takes away the Figueroa Corridor, all of which I have represented for seven years and are part of the Franklin feeder community. The amendment does not give me the Latinos in that district that I have represented able to. Finally, on the same theme of slowing down and looking at things, the C.L.A., then through its consultant, Mr. Ely, has acknowledged that what is before you exceeds his own recommendations. He talks about core constitutional voting rights issues, and one of the pieces that Councilman Rice talked about, about the polarization of the vote, they're using in that analysis El Sereno and Pacoima, both of which are not in my district in the new map.
Mr. Tokowski.
And I will finish here, Council President, I appreciate the moment. I earned 40% of the Latino vote in both of my elections. I am not here to run from that issue. I am asking that the communities of Franklin High, along the Highland Corridor and Cypress Park, be included in my district, and that Marshall, Mr. Labaja's home state, be included and not be divided in the way that they're being proposed in the amendment that is not the commission, the publicly testified commission report. Thank you very much, council and Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. As a member of the committee, I made a motion that we would keep it in committee and not move it forward, and I still believe that it needs to be reviewed by committee since committee members themselves never had an opportunity to debate the issues. We heard from the public over and over again on their concerns, but as a committee member, we never debated the issues amongst ourselves. So I would move that it go back to committee. Number one. Secondly, I have a question regarding the split, 49 schools and information we received that shows there are 16 splits on both maps. And as I understand, the Ed Reyes map has only 12 splits, and not 16 as reported to us by the C.L.A., and I'd like to have someone from the C.L.A.'s office come forward on that issue, and if there was incorrect information, we all make errors, but between 16 and 12, fewer splits means better representation. Can you please respond to that, John?
Yes, John, welcome with the C.L.A.'s office. When that list was prepared, I pulled out the commission report, and there was a table in that report, and I went down the wrong table on the Valley portion of when I prepared that chart. So there were four Valley high schools that were listed as split that actually are not split in the minority report plan. So what we would have on the 12 splits instead of 16.
So we'd have fewer splits over the 49?
Yeah.
12 versus 16 in what is considered map one versus map two or the Ed Reyes map?
Yes.
Okay.
Secondly, the issue on politics, and I heard the term "smoke-filled rooms," as a former charter commissioner on the elected charter form commission, and my colleagues, Janice Hunter and Jacob Flavi, verify this, politics plays a role, whether you're an elected official or you're on a committee or a commission, politics plays a role. We need to recognize that, and it's my concern, representing the city of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, that we keep communities of like interest together, that we keep the feeder pools to the appropriate schools, and we have as few splits as possible. Is there anything else regarding the information we received? And again, we received this this morning, which we really haven't had time to digest, the minority report. Any other inaccuracies that you've recognized that we need to, that need to be brought forward other than the split?
There are none that have come to my attention yet. I know there's some, yeah, that's it.
So it's been reviewed by you, but it has not been reviewed by, to my knowledge, the staffs of the various council members since we received this report during the council meeting sometime after 10 o'clock this morning.
So I would again ask that, did you have some? It's just been pointed out to me that on the community splits, that the Reyes plan does not split Granada Hills, Encino, Warner Center, Winnetka. I need to look at the map of Encino just to verify that because of where the borders are. I need to take a look at that one.
I honestly believe from the committee's position, and also today, there are still unresolved issues and questions that need to be ironed out before this council takes the final position on this. So as politics as they are, and negotiations they are, and compromises they are, I know everyone wants to do the right thing, and the concern I have, along with everyone else, is what's best for the students. Valley wants to separate, Valley schools want to break up. Clearly, there's problems that need to be addressed. Eighty-five new schools on the table for L.A. Unified in the next few years, so there's major issues that have to be addressed, and this is going to last for the next 10 years. Whatever we come up with, we'll be there for 10 years, and I don't think we need to move forward with it until we have all the answers because it's so critical to the education system of our students and people of Los Angeles. So I would ask that we send it back to committee, and we digest that information, and if we can't send it back to committee, then we get a continuance at least to Friday so we can digest the information and make sure we're making the right move for the right reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Zain. Is that a motion to refer back to committee? Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'm going to oppose the motion to refer this back to committee. I was supportive of Mr. Reyes's original motion to continue, but not to send it back to committee. It's something that we ought to take a look at and take time and digest what's before us. If you can count, then they'll say, well, let's delay it for the committee, and it crawls out again. That discussion was held in committee. I was at committee, and I listened to the full discussion. We've had hearings all around the city in We've had hearings all around the city and we've heard all of those as well. I think most of you are prepared to vote. I'm prepared to support Mr. Reyes's original motion that we continue this matter. Mr. Barson suggests that if you're going to continue, do it a week from today, Tuesday, and if you're going to do that, then that could be the motion I'll vote for. Or I'm going to vote to upset somebody today and vote for one of the plans. So please, my friends, don't ask me to make that decision today because I won't give you enough time to consider your thoughts. I might also say to remember what happened ten years ago. And I'll be saying this for the last time as I said, at the commission hearings, that members of the city council abused their power. When they determined that they would just leave one school board district entirely in the valley and bring one from Tonksan to Hunger, down in the east LA, hoping that they could get another seat. And of course, they lost. They lost. David Tukowski won. But he would not have been elected even in that seat. They would have been left in the valley unless he moved. So he'd been given an opportunity to serve for a period of time that he would not have otherwise have had. For eight years. So I would say to you, my friends, that that was the beginning of the attempt to break up the school district. And it rolled over to say, "Now let's separate from the city." When I told them at that time, things like this would happen if they abused their power and took one seat from the valley, which they did anyway. Nobody listened. While voting to eight to seven, originally the vote was eight to seven, to leave two districts in the valley. Mr. Wax, flip-flopped on the valley and made an eight to vote to draw the bodies the way they are drawn today. I would hope that this council wouldn't do that. That it show all fairness to the people who live in the valley and in the city. And give proportional representation that was intended by the constitution. One person, one vote. To the valley. And I'm sure both plans are entertaining that thought process. So if you want to vote, Mr. Reyes, to continue, fine, you go back to committee. No, you can always amend some flight amendments on the floor if you choose to do that. Takes eight votes to do it, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I stand to also ask for us to continue this. And I also would add my support to continuing it until Tuesday, not Friday, for a lot of reasons. So I think if we're going to continue it, it really needs to be Tuesday and not Friday. Whether or not it goes back to committee, I'm neutral on that. But let me say, I always feel like I need to defend the fact that I was on that charter reform commission. And what were we thinking? But clearly, we were thinking that every ten years we do have this very political process where we redraw the lines for the council districts and the school board members' districts. And we really felt like there was a movement in this city to really bring paid people back into the process. Bring the people who are most impacted by our decisions back into the process. And that's clearly what has happened. We, it was very exciting actually to watch the redistricting process, to have these public hearings all over the city, have people come and testify. Sometimes come and testify about things that they had no jurisdiction over, but just the fact that people wanted to vent. They wanted to talk about their schools, they wanted to talk about their city. And for that reason, even that process was valuable. And so in no way, what we're doing, I think, is in any way disregarding or somehow dishonoring or somehow disrespecting what the process was. But clearly, from the redistricting commission and even from our own ad hoc committee on redistricting, it was not a clear mandate for any one of these maps. It was a very close vote that came out of both the commissions. What I find that I would like more time on is the fact that we did get new information, as you said, Dennis, just today. I would like to see the Maldef amendment separated from Map One clearly for me so I can understand what was amended, what was not originally a commission recommendation. So I would ask that we postpone this, continue this for a week until next Tuesday so we have the opportunity to really look at this. This is serious. You know, this impacts a lot of people's lives, a lot of children's lives, a lot of school board members' lives. And I don't see the need to rush and vote today. It happens once every ten years. I think we owe that to each other and I think we owe it to the process to continue with this until Tuesday. So I hope you'll support me on that.
Thank you. Ms. Tukowski.
I share, I think, is the building consensus that we need more time on this. I came in this morning and asked for the committee report. It's only to find that they weren't yet ready at 9:30. This is something that clearly a lot of time has been spent on by a lot of our citizens, a lot of the members of the redistricting commissions and by the committee members themselves. And this is not something I think we should try to all assemble and get information on this quickly, particularly when we're told that there is wrong information. I think only because it was rushed so quickly. I also share Mr. Zines's recommendation that it go back to committee. I don't think, I know the committee is meeting on Thursday. Adding this for a deliberate debate, deliberative debate on the part of the committee members is worthwhile. I was also curious in not only knowing in terms of the feeder schools, the communities of interest, the school areas of interest, which I think are critical, but also an explanation if there is one for the number of changes between the two maps that affect the East Valley and West Valley district, however they're configured. So I think it makes sense. I really, really would like to get clear, concise information. I saw that Mr. Reyes had had a chart. I don't know if that chart was available to other members or his staff had put it together. But it was a very useful tool in looking at what was what as opposed to reading the, just the language in the reports to really look at a glance as to what's going on. And so I think that that makes sense. I have no problem with recommending that it continues to be Tuesday instead of Friday if that is more convenient for various council schedules. But I think we would all benefit if the five members of the committee would go at it one more time and send it to committee. So I think that does make the most sense. But I really would like to see clarity and at least some kind of chart recommendation on the two different versions as well as clarification from the city attorney and our consultants to the issues that Mr. Tukowski raised, which is which one meets the Voting Rights Act and whether or not, when meeting the Voting Rights Act, if there's something that meets it with better clarity, with better firmness, with better conviction? Is that important to us, is important to know? I don't think we usually try to go around here doing what the minimum of the law requires, but something that is really solid. And having been a part of at least the history of this council where I think for the last four redistrictings, we have been challenged. We've been challenged successfully by Maldef. I think we want to be very, very cautious and very, very critical in what we do and how and why to make sure that we more than meet the minimum test of what the Voting Rights Act requires.
Mr. Burton.
As long as it's going to be next Tuesday, I'll call the previous question.
Okay, the previous question has been called. We did have Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zines waiting to speak. But Madam Curran, please open the roll on the previous question. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, that is approved. We have two motions on the desk. The Reyes motion requesting a continuance. And the Zines motion requesting that we refer back to committee. Mr. Weiss.
I just want to tell my colleagues that the continuance motion, I don't know if you accepted it as a friendly amendment or not. Ms. Hahn suggesting that the continuance be until Tuesday instead of Friday. If you do accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Reyes, what I will do is I will commit to each and every one of my colleagues that we will add as one of our agenda items on Thursday further discussion of the LAUSD map. That way, we will not formally refer the matter back to committee. We will keep it on calendar in council next Tuesday. And I will schedule further discussion of this matter and invite Mr. Reyes and his staff to join us there on Thursday.
Councilman Weiss, I take that as a friendly amendment. If it's Tuesday, here on Thursday, committee, I think we would be able to focus on this very, very important issue.
Mr. Zines.
Yes, I would support that since we're going to have a meeting on Thursday to debate that on Thursday with the committee. We'll come back on Tuesday. And that'll give us sufficient time to iron it out and come back with a full committee report. So I would support that.
Okay, does that mean you're withdrawing your motion? Mr. Zines withdraws his motion to refer the matter back to committee. Madam Curran, please open the roll on the motion to continue. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. So item thirty-one is continued one week. Thank you very much. Next time, please.
Next time, Mr. President, item number thirty-three called specially by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn.
Do we want to have a report first?
Okay, we have item thirty-three before us. Ms. Hahn, you're requesting the staff report.
What we have before us is a resolution on, once again, our formal response to LAFCO's report on the harbor reorganization. And we basically set forth just our response. And I'd like to hear from our staff on this. But we need to just probably move on this. It's, they're going to take a vote tomorrow on whether or not they will consider the facts and either put the harbor proposal on the ballot for November or in fact, what the executive director is now recommending is to postpone this vote until 2004 because they feel there's been too much information that's been given in the last week with some boundary changes in the Tidlands area and some other information that they feel like there's not enough information to make this decision tomorrow. But this lays out our response in terms of some of the assets that we are, we're not willing to give up without compensation and a couple of things, maybe you'd like to speak to that.
Surely, Councilmember Hahn and Mr. President, members of the council, Fred Burton, City Attorney's Office, before you is a resolution that at the beginning recounts a bit of the history of the harbor special reorganization proposal. And at the very end indicates that the executive director of LAFCO, Mr. Very Calamine, is recommending that the commission, LAFCO commission, postpone consideration of the matter pending further study. We also make note of the fact that, so far as we are aware, there is no resolution that has been prepared, that has been presented to LAFCO either by the executive director or by any, or by others with regard to the harbor special reorganization proposal. So with these considerations in mind, what's before you is a recommendation that is a resolution, I should say, that indicates that the mayor should transmit reports from the city attorney and the CAO to LAFCO. And also provides that if in fact, what is considered tomorrow is a resolution on the harbor special reorganization proposal, that there are certain positions the city should take. And these positions include that the city would not have agreed to the transfer of that territory, that the city has not agreed to any terms and conditions in a resolution we haven't seen. The city stands by the resolution, the terms and conditions that the city in the past has presented to LAFCO as acceptable. And it also realizes the city attorney to present appropriate legal concerns should they present themselves tomorrow. So that's essentially the gist of what's before you. And now let me turn the microphone over to Mr. Fujioka, your CAO.
We prepared a report and transmitted it to the mayor and your council that identifies some serious concerns related to the executive officer's initial report. We found that his report has some serious flaws. The basic analytical construct of the report is at best flawed. At worst, it provides a formula for, I think, of very disastrous consequences to both this proposed city and the remaining city. One item that's of serious concern is that the analysis shows $105 million in expenditures with the required level or with existing level of only $99 million in reserve. This is equivalent to negative six percent reserve level. They have, to make this thing, I'm sorry, to make the proposal work, the executive officer has attempted to shoehorn the arm. His financial analysis to ensure or at least to partially achieve the level, at least the basic level of revenue neutrality and what that fiscal viability. But he assumes that refuge collection will be contracted out, which that means in simple terms is that the residents of the harbor will have to start paying for refuge collection. He also assumes that the sheriff's department will provide law enforcement instead of LAPD. And yet, the proposal prepared by the sheriff's department is at best a sketchy proposal and fails to provide or at least to address or to describe a comprehensive level of law enforcement for the proposed harbor city. There's also an issue whether or not the harbor city will replace or refurbish the existing harbor police station. But it fails to note that in Prop Q, the proposition approved by entire citizens of Los Angeles, it was our intent to replace that facility with the bond proceeds from Proposition Q. There's also a proposal that the new city, the proposed new harbor city, would not be required to pay their existing share of general, city general fund to my debt payments, parking, and the sanitation equipment charge supported debt. This is, this is, this in itself is a serious issue. And we transfer that burden and that responsibility from the proposed city to the remaining city, which would have a significant impact on the remaining citizens of the, the remaining city. With that, we think that the proposal to create the new harbor city does not meet the basic elements of revenue neutrality nor doesn't meet the elements of fiscal viability. And we strongly recommend that you transmit our report and the city attorney's report to LAFCO for its consideration.
Thank you. I would just add that, again, I think when I was there last time, it was clear that they were still, as you said, they're trying to sort of play with the numbers. And they were playing with the idea that the way this new harbor city would be viable would be as if they would be forgiven of their past bond indebtedness. They would be able to, the sheriff's department would be able to take over the old harbor station, LAPD station, which I went on a walk-through this morning at 8:00 AM with all the interested parties. And it's clearly, it's a dilapidated building. It's one of those that we were going to demolish and build a brand-new station. The sheriff's department has actually indicated that they have never really completely assessed the public safety needs of the harbor area. In fact, their first proposal was a very glossed-over, look-at-at-one-time proposal. And yet, those are the numbers being used by LAFCO to prove that this will be a viable city. So I think it's not going to work now. I don't think this new city is going to work in 2004 either because I don't think there's any way you can cut this, slice this, dice this that really makes this city viable unless you forgive all of their debt and we give them all of our assets. And maybe then they would be okay. But I'm glad to hear that that's not something we're agreeing to at this point. And I think it should be, we should make that very clear. In a way, I wish they would take the vote tomorrow and say that it was not viable and they did not recommend this harbor reorganization to happen. But it sounds like they're going to vote to postpone until 2004. Nevertheless, I think we need to be very clear in the city that our position has not changed in some of these very critical areas which they're depending on for financial viability. So I would ask that you would approve this resolution and then we would send it to the mayor immediately so they can transmit it for tomorrow.
Ms. Tukowski.
Given that we're about to lose a quorum and this is an important matter to transmit, I move the previous question.
Okay, the previous question has been moved, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Labange is waiting to speak without objection. Let's open the roll, the previous question. Close the roll.
Nine eyes, one no.
Mr. Holden, have a fight. Mr. Labange.
I can take it back. I want to reconsider that all. Or if you pass, settle in disguise. I thought so too. Mr. Labange passes. He is the final speaker.
Isn't this about the succession? And San Pedro? Pedro. Well, are they going to leave? I'll speak.
Mr. Holden.
Are they going to leave or not leave? What's your preference?
I don't want to vote.
All right. Now, the vote is to, against San Pedro having a right to vote, 2002, yes or no?
No, this is to transmit information to LAFCO.
We're not going to transfer our assets.
Oh, I see, not to San Pedro without compensation. What about the San Pedro Valley?
We took the same position. We took the same position.
Same position?
Right.
Oh, so we've been consistent.
Once and for all.
All right. I like the people down there. If they decide they want to leave, I'm going to move there and run for office.
Certainly should be an encouragement.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Members, before taking a vote, would you, I just received a card from Jim McQuiston. Did you wish to speak at this time if they were prepared to vote?
Sure. Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I've looked over these, as you know, I've attended zillions of these LAFCO meetings and put in many position papers, which the city has supported, by the way. I've done it independently. And I've looked over the CIO report here, and he's hit it right on the nail. The state code says you cannot be forgiven debt just because you get out. In fact, they have a special code section on that particular point. So it's kind of foolish for the executive officer to try things. But I figured that if he is continuing this, he's going to get the people's, they're so angry that they're never going to vote for succession, so maybe he's doing us a favor. One of the things I do want to mention, though, I did talk to people, influential people in the harbor area about the substitution of the sheriff's department. And they said, if he substitutes the sheriff's department, definitely they're not going to vote for succession. They all hate the sheriff's department down there, and they actually love the police department, which is quite a change, you might say, from our grand part area.
Thank you, Jim. This concludes public comment for this item. Leave everybody for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the reports before us. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. For which, please. Is Mr. Rudy Thomas still with us?
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Before proceeding to public comments, the chair recognizes Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Mr. President, I'd like to move reconsideration on item number six. Members who are not in their chairs as they indicated at the time, I think if the case, a different outcome can be achieved.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration.
Same item on the amendment, yes.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Item six now back before us, Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. A simple matter, the city attorney indicates that it is in order. I rose to speak to the issue of the amendment, and I indicated that at the time it came in, at the 11th hour after having spent a substantial amount of time accommodating the concerns, the committee report does in fact take it into consideration without creating any loophole. There is discretion. Therefore, I would ask that the amendment, as I previously suggested, be voted against and in fact, the committee report as a whole be adopted. Members who were not in their seats wanted the opportunity to be able to vote no on the amendment.
Mr. Rudy Thomas and Mr. Stein.
Yes, Mr. President, colleagues, just a question. The maker of that motion is not here along with some other members who voted for that. And is it appropriate to take that position now when those folks are not here? Or should we somehow table it and bring it back? I just think in fairness, the maker of the motion should have a comment. And some folks who did vote for it are not here, and other people who didn't vote are here. And in all fairness, maybe a madam city attorney can respond to that. Because I'm a little confused on it.
Mr. Rudy Thomas.
I did apprise a person that a reconsideration would be coming forward, Mr. Stein.
And they left in spite of that.
I did apprise.
The parties who are not here? Okay. Well, that answers my question.
Mr. Labange.
Point of information is the city attorney. Respond to fairness.
It's only advice. Okay, seeing no other speakers. Madam Clerk, I believe Mr. Rudy Thomas. Was that a motion to draw the amendment?
The simple way to dispose of it as a suggestion that was made is just simply to adopt the motion before you from the committee report and proceed with an affirmative vote.
Okay, so this would be to adopt the committee report and receive and file the amended motion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
I vote.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with, Mr. President. Fourth with on this item and fourth with item 26 as well, please. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Crossword at this time, Cecil Carpio, followed by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Cecil Carpio, and I live in Inglewood. But my MTA bus number 40, the City Hall, broke down, and I missed any discussion on item number 26, and I hope I have permission to go forward. Westchester Vitalization and Ruth Galanter got together and put in an application for $5,000 for a streetscape enhancement in downtown Westchester back in June of 2000. And that was going to enhance the quality of downtown Westchester along Sepulveda Boulevard. It went before the Board of Public Works in October of 2001, where members of the community protested the destruction of broad canopy trees, replacement with Mexican fan palms, and a disregard for the two-to-one replacement ratio for trees removed in the city of Los Angeles. The project was amended by the Board of Public Works, and then it was dropped by the Westchester Vitalization Corporation.
May I ask you to conclude, please?
If nothing else, then, along with the $30,000 that the Westchester Vitalization Corporation received, I hope they will also receive information about what is planned for the community and what the community really wants.
Ma'am, if I may ask you to wrap it up.
Perhaps the Sepulveda Task Force should have gotten the money directly, or perhaps the community group Vision, the group that opposed the Sepulveda widening in the first place, should have gotten the $30,000, or perhaps LAXIN, LAXX Expansion, no, a community group made up of residents from the city of LA, Westchester in particular, El Segundo and Inglewood could have gotten the money. LAXX Expansion, no, was the first community group to identify the Sepulveda widening. And so in a way, that $5,000 that was slotted for the Westchester Vitalization for their trees along Sepulveda that would have eventually gotten ripped out by the Sepulveda widening, in a way, LAXX Expansion, no, saved the city of LA $5,000.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Hawkins from dish number eight. Concerning guns, on number two, because I believe because of people having now insurance and bonds to own and buy a gun is still not right because of our resident area and high crime and drugs of people dying over $20, whether cocaine or marijuana, and the danger of children with playing with play guns. Money do not rule because of bonds to rule our animals and people with guns. Also on number 10, I vote no because of illegal and cheating of vote cards and numbers. I believe that Republican and Democrat is the only way to go as a voting. I do not believe in liberals, churches, interest groups, Green Party leading our nation. I believe we should narrow it down to Democrats and Republicans only. And the danger of split underground, which is on number eight, number six, is the danger of raids, which is poison out of the phone line. I believe a phone that is connected to eardrums problems, radiation of airways, which is through the phone line, which is called airways, which is connected with cordless phones. I believe that is another situation that is causing cancer and also concerning.
Thank you very much.
We need to know the safety of preparation for war through the lines, which are, are the lines overseas because we're going under now. Now we want it up. I'm not really positive if these lines are going up towards the roof, now back down, and now where are these connection lines going?
Thank you very much.
If we're in the middle of a war, we must know the connection line is in America and not overseas and coming back connected with America, which is dealing with lightning, lights up in city with the street lighting.
Ma'am, I have to ask you to conclude now, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session? You have motions for posting and referral.
The motions are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
In California, a lot of the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, next item before us, please.
Twenty-nine A, and that's settlement in the offer of unpaid business tax assessment against Health Source Medical Group, and that's authorizing the city attorney to accept
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Twenty-nine B is also an unpaid business tax assessment against Unilab Corporation, and that's authorizing the city attorney to accept $138,176.38.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved as well. Fourth with.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Adjourning motions? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The adjourning motion I have today is for the mother of George Takeh, Fumiko Emily Takeh, born September the 29th, 1912. She passed away May 25th, 2002. Her service will be held at Hongpa Hongwangji Buddhist Temple on Friday, May 31st, at 7:30 PM. She was 89 years old, born in Florin, California, and was the daughter of Ben Kichi and Shigino Nakamura. In 1922, she was sent to Japan to be educated and returned to California. And in 1935, she married Taki Kuma Takei in Los Angeles. After the outbreak of World War II, Fumiko and her family, along with 120,000 other Japanese-Americans, were placed behind the barbed wire enclosures of the United States internment camps. They were evacuated from their home in Los Angeles in 1942, sent first to the Santa Anita Race Track Assembly Center, then to the internment camp at Roerwehr, Arkansas, and then to the internment camp at Tulley Lake. She was widowed in 1979 and was active in the Hongpa Hongwangji Buddhist Temple and the Pioneer Center. She and her husband were avid travelers and traveled all over the globe. She is survived by her children, George, Henry, and Nancy, Reiko, Takeh, all of Los Angeles, her grandchildren, Scott, and two great-grandchildren and numerous other family members. And in lieu of flowers, any recognition or requests should be sent to the Japanese-American National Museum. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Rudy Thomas and Mr. Holden wish a second. All members. Mr. Holden.
Yes, Mr. President, remember, just to add on, I was not aware that George's mother passed, but she raised a fantastic son, George, and other members of the family as well. It's worth noting, however, that the entire family supported George when Mayor Bradley was elected mayor to replace him in the 10th district. He was everybody's number-two choice. And George was neck and neck with David Cunningham, who was the mayor's first choice. But George, who had been so active in our community, was everybody's new, and would have been, under certain circumstances, the constant person. He later on served, appointed by Mayor Bradley, to serve on RTD Board of Directors and served there for many years. Everybody knows also that he was active and prominent person in Star Trek. So his mother and father and parents raised a son who did so well for our community and certainly she would be missed by all for a job well done with George and the other members of the family and for the city of Los Angeles.
Any others? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.